Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening, with the exception of Councilman Kerr. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A: Approve Agenda as Submitted. Item B: Receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C: Receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D: Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting on August 21st, 2017, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item E: Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting on August 28th, 2017, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item F: Approval of Treasurers' Report of Claims in the Amount of $507,133.50. Item G: Approval of Boswell Report of Claims in the Amount of $80,210.71. Item H: Refer Claim of Kent W. Reenie under the Nebraska Political Subdivision Tort Claims Act to the City Attorney and City Insurance Carrier for review and disposition. Item I: Approval of Change Order Number One, an increase in the amount of $6,028, and Pay Request Number Two in the Amount of $303,720.83 to Lotman Carpenter Construction Company for the Second Street Reconstruction Project, Ella to Grand Street. Item J: Approval of Final Pay Request in the Amount of $67,145 to K-2 Construction for the Hendrix Addition Sanitary Sewer Extension Project 2017, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K: Resolution Number 6099, Executing into the Memorandum of Understanding with the Celebration Nebraska Statehood Regarding the Trucking Through Nebraska, a Mobile Children's Museum in Celebration of Nebraska's Sesquicentennial. Item L: Resolution Number 6100, Executing the Preliminary Engineering Services Supplemental Agreement Number Three with Snyder &amp; Associates Inc. for the NDRR Project Number ENH-61056, Control Number 13127, which is the Second Street, Court Street to Ella Street, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Is there any item a council member wants removed from the Consent Agenda? The public? Mr. Catlin?
Phil.
Phil, I'm sorry.
Case, please.
Item K? Sorry? Anyone else? All right, Mr. Catlin.
Mayor, I move that all the items listed in the Consent Agenda, with the exception of Item K, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that all items under the Consent Agenda be approved, with the exception of Item K. And your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0.
Mayor, I move the Resolution Number 6099, Executing into the Memorandum of Understanding with Celebration Nebraska Statehood Regarding the Trucking Through Nebraska, a Mobile Children's Museum in Celebration of Nebraska's Sesquicentennial. Be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. That's easier.
Second.
Moved by Catlin.
I was going to ask you to repeat that.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 6099 be approved. Phil?
The only reason I pulled it off is when is it coming through Beatrice?
We have Lisa Wiggins is here.
Lisa Wiggins, when does it come through?
October 1st through the 3rd, so is when it comes. We put the application in back in October, actually, a year ago, and then Beatrice was notified that we were accepted. And so the memorandum of understanding helps us kind of assess who's the responsibilities are and so forth, with handling the responsibilities of running it and the volunteers that are needed and so forth. So this is a memorandum of understanding with the Governor's Office. And then we have plans to actually take it out to the fairgrounds at this time because of October could be weather imperative. And so we have some access to some buildings with some outside activities. So schools are already, the tours are already lined up. And Sunday, most certainly, they will be open to the public. We're bringing those tours in from all of Gage County, too, in addition to Beatrice. Questions?
That's the only one?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Lisa, for being here. Any other questions? Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6099 has been approved. Next item is a public hearing, a public hearing to amend the fiscal year 2017 budget. Tobias?
Yeah, every year, hopefully not every year, but occasionally we have to amend the current year budget. We have to do that this year. And I believe, I gotta find it here in my packet, hold on just a second, we listed a couple of reasons why. Most notably, it has to do with the gas plant. That'd be the largest reason why you have to amend FY '17's budget. Obviously, when we set the budget for this year, we did not have the gas plant in there. You can see on page 56 of your packet, or 55, excuse me, we have a few other items listed and there's reasons why. But a million dollars if it's the gas plant.
All right, I recommend that we close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:06 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by a party, that the public hearing be closed at 7:06 PM. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Next item is an ordinance to adopt the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2017.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 17-024. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the ordinance be given number 17-024. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by title, by, read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance number 17-024 by number only the first time. Ordinance number 17-024 by number the second time. And ordinance number 17-024 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 17-024 be passed and appro-
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by a party, that ordinance number 17-024 be passed and approved. Any further discussion? And your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance number 17-024 has been approved. Next item is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2018 and 2019 biannual budget.
We went over the budget the last couple of council meetings, so unless you guys have any particular questions about anything.
Do have a question if Chief Lang is available. And I bring this up only because of something that I had heard in the news, I think, a week ago, and I just didn't know whether or not we needed a plan for this. But I think the comment was made that the city should pay for their own prisoners that are housed in the Gage County Jail. What is your response to that?
Sure. Vice Lang, Chief of Police, this comes up periodically when we talk about city-county prisoners, because sometimes people don't understand how we got to where we are today and what actually the differences are. Prisoners that are arrested under state statute violations go to the county jail by statute. Every county's the same. If a state trooper arrests someone, a county deputy, a city police officer, conservation officer, whoever arrests somebody in a county for a state statute violation, they go to that county jail. And that's just the way, that's the way it's set up in Nebraska and in most, in most states. We also have a series of city ordinances, very similar to what other cities have. And we do, in Beatrice, a thing we call mirrored ordinances. So we have, for example, an assault ordinance, and it's the exact same thing as the state statute assault ordinance. So you say, why do you have two? Well, we have two because if we write it under the city ordinance, then our city attorney, who's not in that chair, but will be, is the guy that would prosecute that. And that takes that workload off of the county attorney. And this is generally done for very minor offenses, just some disturbance pieces, some minor assaults, minor thefts, that kind of thing. There's a couple of exceptions. For example, one of them is a statute or ordinance called disorderly conduct. Basically, that's a guy who, or a girl, who is causing a disruption in the community through their actions. Quite honestly, they're usually intoxicated. They ask them to calm down, knock it off, whatever, and it doesn't happen, so they get arrested for that charge. Also, things like dog at large, some different parking violations, a few things like that are specific city ordinances. But those, all of those other folks, except for the disorderly, don't go to jail. They would just get a ticket and pay a fine. So, for example, what's happening right now, because we don't have a city attorney, is we're writing most of our minor things, we're writing under state statute. It's going to the county attorney's office, and he's prosecuting them through that, through that way. Give you some idea of numbers. In a given year, we might arrest less, certainly less than 20 in a whole year for disorderly conduct and put them in jail. I mean, it just doesn't happen very often. So we do have, we do put a lot of people in jail, unfortunately, and that is a part of what we have to do. And this year has been a banner year for that, to the two point. And that kind of goes in cycles. Last year was a relatively lower year for physical arrests, so. But that's the difference. There's no need to put any money away. Those comments were made without really understanding how it all works, quite honestly.
Okay.
Aren't most comments made without really understanding how it really works?
Well, sometimes, you know, and like I said, we go through this kind of dissertation every so often with elected officials or with appointed officials that don't quite know how it all, how it all fits together. We're all county taxpayers, we all pay county taxpayers, we all support the county jail. I mean, it takes prisoners from assorted different law enforcement people that might arrest them, so that's, but that's in, in a nutshell, that's kind of how it works.
Okay. Any questions to the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Any other questions regarding the budget?
Stan?
Yes, sir.
Since we're doing budget, maybe Tobias can go over some of the capital improvements, just the highlights of some of the more fun ones. There's not a lot of fun ones in this capital program anymore, but some people that, you know, aren't here, that have a budget for the last couple, maybe would get an idea of what we're spending their hard-earned money on, besides bad guys, 20 a year.
Sure, I can go over some of the, if you will, highlights of our capital budget. Obviously, we have the operations side, nothing much is changing there. Capital budget is kind of the building of projects, if you will, out there. If you're looking for fun ones, probably the ones to look at are Hannibal Park. The grant came through for Hannibal Ballfields. We got confirmation of that this last week, and so you'll see some improvements going out there. Most notably, a parking lot, some trails throughout the complex there, a new playground set. That trail, that grant is being split 50-50 with Nebraska Game and Parks. And so you'll see that go through. Also, you see, we have proposed in there Hannibal Park Ballfield Building for some indoor batting facilities and things like that. We're working on putting the funding sources together through a number of different partners to see that project move forward. We have money set aside for either splash pad or water park improvements, or kind of decide exactly what happens at the water park, what doesn't happen, and then decide if we're going to move forward with a splash pad or not, or two of them, or different locations. I mean, there's multiple things there, but we are looking to make some improvements in that look, in that area. And then the other fun one for next year would be the trail, looking to finish that from Trailhead Park down to Dempsters, making that connection and finalizing that portion of the trail. So in FY '18, those would be the fun capital projects that you see. FY '19, you know, right now, probably the most fun one you see there is we're hoping that the trail from Water Park back to Hannibal Park gets completed in FY '19. That is a part of a grant, transportation enhancement grant that we have. It is the same grant funding you have for the Second Street project between Court Street and Ella Street. As you know, that one took about eight years. I think we're on year six with that trail. We're hoping that that moves forward. We've already made one payment, so we're kind of committed at this point. But yeah, as far as fun projects, capital projects go, those would kind of be the highlights of them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:15 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:15 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Next, I'll introduce an ordinance to adopt the Biannual Appropriations Bill for fiscal years 2018 and 2019 in the amount of $44,873,855 for fiscal year '18, and $42,166,768 for fiscal year 2019.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 17-025. Title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by a party, that the ordinance be given number 17-025. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance number 17-025 by number the first time. Ordinance number 17-025 by number the second time. And ordinance number 17-025 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 17-025 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, ordinance number 17-025 be passed and approved. Any further discussion?
Stan?
Yes, sir.
Just so Doug understands, because he's been there forever, but just people that watch it at home, listen to it on the radio, that's what it costs to run the city every year. I think, you know, you tell people that, and when I, you know, a long time ago, when I first started here in the early 90s, I think this was around 24, 25 million. So, and we actually have less employees today than we did then. So I think, I just think it's important that people under, you know, the community understands exactly how much money we spend, and you guys manage annually. So, and not everything that, you know, there's, there was several things in the budget this year that got funded that I was looking forward to, that I've asked for for several years, and there's still two or three that I continually ask for. So Tobias and I have these conversations. Rick said it before in the work session, we're in good financial shape. And, you know, that's not because of us that are voting on it, it's because of you guys that are working on it. Just thought I'd pass them along.
Thanks, thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
I'm kind of, I've said this before, but I'm kind of always amazed we have $44 million in our budget. And I'm looking out over the audience here, and there's maybe one person that's not, doesn't work for the city in one way or another, and we have other people that come to our meetings and were sometimes, that are maybe less positive things, but I would hope that our community would get more involved in our $44 million budget next.
You have a lot of people watching at home. This, it's well-watched. I don't know what the Nielsen ratings would be, but it's watched.
And you have to congratulate Lyndon and Tobias for what a nice job that they did.
The department heads also.
I agree.
Any other discussion? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Ordinance number 17-025 has been passed and approved.
Mayor, I move to increase the total restricted funds authority for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2017, and ending on September 30th, 2018, by an additional 1% as authorized in Section 13-519 of the Nebraska Revised Statutes.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by a party, to increase the total restricted funds authority for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017, and ending on September 30th, 2018, by an additional 1% as authorized by Section 13-05, 13-519 of the Nebraska Revised Statute. Tobias?
This is something, again, that we do every year. State statute allows us to do it, it's to our benefit if you do move forward with this, adding additional 1% to our restricted funds, so.
Comments? And your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Next is a hearing to set the fiscal year 2018 final property tax request.
If you're looking at the general levy, our total levy for, for next year is actually going to go down slightly. Has to do with the fact that we have some debt levy that's going to come down, but our levy stays relatively constant for the next two years, is what we're proposing. Slight decrease in FY '18, slight decrease in FY '19.
Comments? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:21 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:21 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Next item is a resolution, Resolution Number 6101, setting the property tax request for the city of Beatrice for fiscal year 2018.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 6101 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by a party, that Resolution Number 6101 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
Again, this is just the resolution that sets the property tax request we just discussed. Unless you have anything else? Any other questions about it?
Okay. Anything? Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6101 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6102, Calculating the Amount of Unused Restricted Funds Authority.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 6102 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that Resolution Number 6102 be passed and adopted.
Just a minute ago, we talked about the, we passed the ordinance, or excuse me, we passed the ordinance about the restricted funds authority. This is a similar thing, once again, something we do every year.
Questions, anyone? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6102 has been approved. Next item is Item C, Resolution Number 6103, Establishing Rates for Garbage, Refuse, and Rubbish Collection Removal and Disposal.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 61-03 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 6103 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion?
So earlier tonight, as Boswell, you voted to increase the rates at Boswell, so now as City Council, you have to vote to increase the rates at City Council. So that's why you have to do it at both parts. This is what we end up billing the actual individual customers.
Any further comments or discussion? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6103 has been passed and approved. Next item is Item 5, An Ordinance to Convey the West Nine Inches of Lot 4 and the East Half of Lot 5, Block 64, original town now the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, commonly referred to as 407 Court Street, owned by the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, to Raymond A. Arter and Mary Kathleen Ratigan.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 17-026. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 17-026. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved.
Uh, no. It takes six votes.
That is not approved.
I'd like it read once.
You want to make that motion?
Not. I'd like to make a motion if it's read once, to read it one time tonight.
So read by title one time tonight?
Correct.
Okay. And your vote, please.
Well, we got to, I got a motion, but everybody needs a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Uh, seconded by a party.
Okay.
Now your vote.
Well, you can discuss that motion.
Okay. Let's discuss it. Anybody want to discuss it?
I'd like to have an opportunity to discuss it. So I, the transfer and the transaction, and I want to do that not tonight, I want to be able to discuss it with Tobias and you, and that gives me ample time to do that. If we read it by three times tonight, I can't do that. It's done then.
Okay.
I understand. And for us to sell real estate requires two actions. First, you have the ordinance, and you also have a resolution. So that's why you see both of them on here, we have to take two parts of it. So the contract that you have that's been brought to you is a contract for the sale of 407 Court Street with Kate and Ray. It's on page 71 of your packet, we kind of lay out the provisions of it, but it's $10,000 purchase price, $2,000 are paid down, those deposit, those monies have been deposited into her attorney's trust fund. Her attorney has verified that those monies have been, in fact, deposited into her trust fund. Upon you approving the contract, they'll release those funds to the city of Beatrice. The remaining $8,000 then are paid on 18 monthly payments. The first payment begins June 1st of 2018, and are the first of the month, each month thereafter. There's a 2% interest is what she's being charged as part of this transaction. Everybody, we're, buyer and seller are splitting the cost of title insurance, and we had closing set for, on or before October 17th. Obviously, if we don't read it three times tonight, we have to change that because we won't have an opportunity to get this passed, get title insurance, and probably meet that closing date. Not a big deal, but we'll have to push back closing date a few days.
So what we're voting on now would be just for the, whether we want to read it one time?
Read it by one time.
Right. And assuming that motion, or that ordinance passes or doesn't pass, you don't need to take action on the resolution tonight if you chose not to, because you've got to have two more readings of the ordinance before you can take the resolution up. So I would probably not take action on the resolution, hold that back until you get to the third and final reading. At that point, bring the resolution back for approval at that time, because if we need to amend the closing date, it's best to do it then, rather than try and come back with an addendum or something like that.
Everyone clear?
Yep.
So we're voting on reading it by number only the first time, or title?
Title.
Title, by number the first time tonight. Your vote, please. And that is approved 6 to 1, with Mr. Catlin voting no. Ordinance number 17-026 by number the first time, the first time tonight.
Yeah, you have to read it by title. I'm looking for it here.
Well, I had it here.
He's got to read the ordinance to convey real estate.
Could you get that a little bigger for me?
Now you're in my world.
An ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city of Beatrice to provide for the terms of the sale thereof to repeal conflicting ordinance and to provide for publication for an effective date of this ordinance.
So then we'll not take action on the resolution tonight, since we just took the ordinance one time, so we'll skip the resolution.
Okay, so then we'll go to item number 5, which is an ordinance amending Section 16-7 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the closing of streets.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 17-027. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number 17-027. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Ordinance number 17-027 by number the first time. Ordinance 17-027 by number the second time. And ordinance number 17-027 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 17-027 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that ordinance number 17-027 be passed and approved.
Page 82 of your packet, we kind of have a little memo in there explains what Page eighty-two of your packet, we kind of have a little memo in there, explains what this, how this works. What we, our practice, it matches our city code, and, and our city code basically said that only the traffic engineer, i.e. Chief Lang, had the authority to close a street for either an emergency or for a public works project. Well, our practice was anytime Water Department had a water main break, or Street Department needed to do a repair, or anybody else, they closed the street because they're the ones doing the repair. And then they would simply call back the dispatch and let them know that that street was out of service, so fire trucks, ambulance, everybody else knew. If you read our ordinance, that was not what was supposed to happen, and so the way we wrote this was, again, Chief Lang has the ability as traffic engineer to close a street down for an emergency, but it nominates, does things myself or my designate to be able to close a street for a public works project. So in practice, nothing will change for the guys. Everything will continue to flow just as it always has. Steve has a water main break, he's going to close the street. He's going to make the same call back to dispatch, he's going to let them know it's out of service. But this way, in the event that somebody were to run across those barricades, we have the ability to prosecute them for being on a road that was closed properly. The old method, there was probably some argubility there that we didn't close the street properly because Chief Lang didn't close it. Instead, Steve Kelly closed it. So that's the reason for the change. If you look on page eighty-three, we had the redline version, so you can see exactly what was changed. But that is essentially what we changed in the ordinance and the reason.
Questions?
So how many designees do you have? One for each department?
I can have as many as I want to.
Do you have to announce them ahead of time, though?
No, I don't have to, so you won't announce them, because if Jason Moore's gone and Rich Pamisel's in charge that day, I'm not going to wake up that day and sign a declaration on my desk that says that Rich Pamisel now is my designate and can close streets. We could, but we've got a few other things to do. So you give those guys the flexibility to do their work and continue to operate efficiently.
Any other questions? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number seventeen dash zero two seven has been approved. Next item is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone have anything for the public forum? Anyone from the department heads or the public? All right, we'll follow up with reports and strategic plan.
So once again, as we talked about, we want to bring the strategic plan back, make sure we're reviewing it, going over, making sure we're making progress on it. Just a couple highlights to hit on the strategic plan and progress we've made. You know, one of the things, it talks about community services, and in there it talks about Nebraska historic tax credits. We have a couple of businesses downtown, they'll take advantage of the Nebraska historic tax credits as part of the facade improvement program. There are some other ones that got into it and realized that the paperwork is more than what they thought justified the return that they were going to get, so they've kind of walked away from it. But they had an opportunity, they were educated about the program, and just chose not to do that. Others have, so we made progress there. The CLG is one of those that's listed in there. Quite honestly, it's waiting for the attorney to show up and draft it. It's about ninety percent done. It just hasn't gotten done in the last couple months, as it's said on the desk, waiting to get done. But it's sitting there, ready to go, the certified local government. Infrastructure is one thing they talk in there, and they, they recommend that we have an annual long-range capital improvement plan. I would suggest that what you just went through with the budget, if you read in there, it's got it in there. Each one of the department heads went through, they looked at the next five years and made capital improvement plans out five years of things they want to improve or install new. It does recommend going ten and twenty years out. You know, we haven't gone that far, but we do have, we do have five-year capital improvement plans, have had those for a number of years, so I think we continue to make progress on those. Next section, there was housing. Obviously, as you know, we have a number of housing projects going on. We all know about Excel Development and what they're doing. Fakler's got his houses going up on the, on the west side of town and making great progress over there. But meanwhile, you have Brett Wells, you have Goose and you have Blake Mines, they're all building throughout the community. I know they're keeping Building Inspection's Office busy with inspections. So things are going, are going well there on the housing front for the city of Beatrice. Talks about nuisances. We want to make sure we address nuisances. Obviously, we brought Chet on full-time here a couple months ago. That man's been as busy as he wants to be, tracking down nuisances and keeping track of those. He does a wonderful job once he finds them, staying on top of them, getting them cleaned up. If they don't get cleaned up, he cleans them up himself, and then we send bills out accordingly, so. I think you've seen some great progress there, but it's cyclical. I mean, you go through a neighborhood once, and you think you got it cleaned, and you come back two weeks later and you realize that it doesn't seem like much has changed, so, you know, he just kind of keeps going around in circles there, working on those. One of the other sections in there I want to hit on was the environment. Obviously, we did the phase one Dempsters grant there. They're going to come back. DEQ is looking to do a phase two on that property. We've got to get some dates lined up as far as when we can get them onto the property and do the phase two study. But that was listed in there, the Dempsters property, all those were listed. I think if you look over the next year, you'll see some, some big improvement with some buildings coming down. In the budget tonight, you approved the elevator, so that project will probably get started sooner rather than later. In fact, the contract would like to start October one. So we'll probably bring to you a contract this next council meeting to authorize the contractor to get started and move forward with that project. But Storcraft is another one. Most people are probably seeing the fence that's gone up around Storcraft. It's temporary. The idea is that it's up around during demolition. It's not permanent, it's not the new jail, you know. It's none of those things.
Not the Dog Park North?
No, it's not the Dog Park North. It, it's simply up there during demolition. So you'll see a majority of that building come down here, I think, in the next fiscal year as well. And then the old hospital, that's another one for the Excel Development. The first thing you'll see there is the asbestos being removed, but come January, February, I think you'll see actual parts of that building start to be removed. So there's three large buildings that are in town that you probably will have removed in the next calendar year or so. So, again, make improvements on, on the capital plan or in your strategic plan. Unless anybody has any other questions about anything in particular, want to know where we're at on a certain subject.
Everybody? All right, Tobias, thank you very much. Next regular scheduled meeting is going to be on September eighteenth at seven o'clock, right in these chambers, and we will have a work session then on September twenty-fifth at seven o'clock in these chambers. Mr. Catlin, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I would move that the meeting be adjourned at seven thirty-seven P.M.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by party, that the meeting be adjourned at seven thirty-seven P.M. Your vote, please, and that's approved seven zero.